Hello, Berita.
Mitt.
It's good to see you.
The Jamaican is early.
Hey, the Irishman's here on St. Patrick's Day.
Are you ready?
Um, yes, I'm very much excited to see what's in store.
Yeah, me too.
Um, also, I don't know if you heard yet, but the Hampden Rovers will be playing again.
Really?
Yeah, they opened it back up. I guess us all people, we have our shots now, so I guess they they figure it's okay to, uh.
They say it's okay for these old people to play.
Well, I just don't know if they know how much we breathe. All over, so we'll have to watch out for that. I'm looking forward to it. I think the first game's end of April, so I gotta.
Oh, you gotta tone it up a little bit.
Tone it up a lot of bit. Get the COVID, but I got the nineteen.
You're gonna get that COVID off you.
Exactly.
COVID fifty.
It's, yeah, it's a lot.
It is up there.
I'm gonna go, speaking of which, I'm gonna grab myself a glass of water.
Me too. I'm gonna grab some stuff, so I'll see you in a second.
In a little bit.
Okay.
Ms. Renta?
Mr. McGary.
Hello, Ms. Renta.
Hello.
I just wanted to let you know, and actually Cath too, I'm going to. I have made both of you co-hosts. Our meeting tonight is actually, uh, we had some internet issues, so our meeting is being, um, is taking place thanks to a hotspot provided by the Leukemia Leukoma Society. Hopefully my Wi-Fi kicks back on, I think it was, but, uh, just in case, if I, if something, if I should go away, it's not my fault and I have, you two should be able to take over, so. Just to be on the safe side.
Do we, do we actually call a meeting to order?
That's a special.
For this, yes, yeah. So we call a meeting to order, so when the mayor is done, then we just adjourn?
Yep.
Yes, okay, good. I just reviewed that. I thought that was the case.
And, and I imagine we need to do roll call, but I imagine we could continue on if there's not a quorum, since there's no motions?
I would think so. I mean, I'm sure we'll have a quorum, but, you know. Uh, I think you're right, just on this, just in case.
Right, right, just in case.
It's an informational item. Uh, I will just make a couple announcements about, uh, the upcoming public, uh, department head meetings and public hearings and that the FSC, uh, will be giving us some guidance. Um, and then I'll just call on the mayor and we'll begin.
But. And we hope he's on time.
I have did. About that.
Hi, Berita.
Hello.
I'll be back in a couple minutes.
Hello, hello. Wow. We have a lot of people in the audience.
We are well attended this year.
Yeah.
I should have updated my, uh, my library of jokes in case we have to fill some time.
Really? Wow.
Hello, Dr. Horstley.
Hi.
Hi, Dr. Horstley.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you. Oddly enough, to celebrate, uh, we're getting Italian food.
Nice. I made corned beef for Aaron. I don't even eat beef, but.
Corned beef is good exactly one time a year.
Yeah.
Did you do the cabbage?
Yes, that was the motivation. I really love cabbage.
Oh, okay.
I don't know why.
You might be the only person in the world who loves cabbage.
I really like it. You like it too?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, that makes two of you. Uh, Ms. Horstley, um.
You know, um, I have to sit on somebody's, this is a story, y'all, this is a man. I think.
Okay. Um. Never mind, Ms. Horst. I thought we, Ms. Renta, we had a conflict with the FSC, but now we don't? Is that what I'm seeing on our, the budget deliberations?
I don't know. What do you mean? Is that what you're seeing?
Uh, I was looking at the email.
I didn't change any dates, so, oh, gosh.
I can take a look, but we're.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it is. I'm sorry, Ms. Horstley. It is. Dr. Horstley, uh, the public is on the thirtieth. That's, that was the date. So there is a conflict with the next Fiscal Stability Committee.
Oh, I see. The public, okay.
Squeeze them in and we were running out low on time.
Okay, we can just reschedule to the next day, maybe. I'll figure out.
The next day will also be public hearing.
Oh, yeah, so no, we will not.
Maybe Thursday?
Thursday the first is a possibility.
Okay, we'll see.
Talking about Tom Finance as in April Fool's Day, but.
I might be Hampden, uh, Hampdened out by that day, so we might be moving it to the next day, next week, but we'll see.
Six oh one, where's the mayor?
Marjorie, I got you.
Oh, okay. Always Miss Bonnies, I have no idea why.
Oh, I watch for her most of the time.
Thanks, Kim.
You're welcome.
Okay, ready. Ready to receive. Kim, are we going to get, um, budgets delivered, or should we make arrangements to pick up? What's the?
The, we should get an electronic version tonight, and they are arranging delivery for tomorrow.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. Hello, hello, hello.
Hello, Athena.
Hey, uh, Kim, I just put my new address in the comments for you, so it's easy to. It's so weird spelling.
Um.
I don't know if that's helpful, if I should.
Okay, to, to update the list. What's the zip code? One eight, Brad?
One four.
One four, okay.
Yeah, um, sorry, I, I sent it to, to Vera. I thought she sent it around, so it should be.
No, no, she doesn't do stuff like that, but I'll get it out there.
Gated that with you.
Thank you. Does anybody else feel like this budget season just came around way too quick this time?
Yes.
Just finished, like, a few months ago.
We are.
Guys, remember, Dominique's baby was born last, uh, budget season. That's Budget Baby.
Budget Baby Baez.
Budget Baby Baez, I like that.
I hope the baby's grown more than the budget.
Hi, Betty.
Hi, Betty.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, Betty.
Hi, Betty.
Everybody making, um, corned beef tonight or something else for this?
I did.
I did, I did.
It's, you know, I'm really bored, so I also bought socks and delivered them around the neighborhood. I was like a leprechaun. Like a dollar at, at Joann Fabrics this morning, so I was like.
Were they Shamrock-inspired?
Yeah, they were like various themes.
Cute.
That's cute, Valerie.
Getting desperate around here.
Very nice.
Betty, did Curtis Eatonman get in touch with you?
No.
He's trying to get in touch with you.
Why?
Um. He needs you for a, a tax incentive finance, um, team.
Okay.
Um, what's the best way for him to get in touch with you?
By calling me.
Well, I gave him your cellphone number.
Oh, then maybe he did call me, and I just haven't had a chance. I made dinner for, uh, twenty-two people just now, so.
Oh, yeah.
I've been a little tied up.
I, I think, I don't know when he was trying to call you, but I gave him your telephone number.
That's an average Sunday at Betty's house, right, Betty?
Yep, we're just doing it, uh, takeout now because of COVID.
Drive-by.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. And this threw me a curve. I thought it was seven o'clock, so.
Yeah. And then, did you do, did you do all corned beefs? What did you do?
No corned beef. That, no, my kids aren't a big corned beef liker, so I made them, uh, stuffed peppers and biscuits and cookies.
Nice.
Nice.
Yeah, so, and special little cookies for my two little grandsons.
Uh, FYI, Betty, that meeting that Curtis is calling you about is scheduled for three thirty via Zoom on Friday.
Ooh. Um. Okay. I'll stay as long as I can.
Councilwoman Wetmore, I, uh, I apologize for being, uh, too familiar there.
Oh, that's fine. You can call, everybody can call me Betty. I don't care. So. Nice dirty Friday. Okay. By Zoom, are they gonna send me a link?
Um, let me, uh, see if I have a link here. Um, I will send it to you. I do have a link. I will send it directly to you.
Perfect, okay, thanks.
Does anybody have an ETA on the mayor?
I do not.
It's a public on tonight, too?
Yes, there are sixty participants.
This is a very good showing for him if he doesn't appear soon.
Um, President McGary, will we also get a electronic, um, copy of sent to us this evening?
Yeah, the electronic version tonight, paper copy is delivered tomorrow.
No, I would like the, his comments, please, his, his address.
Um, okay, I'll, we'll, uh, in mystery access terms, we'll, we'll, I'm sure they'll be available. We'll make that request.
Last year's were not, so I'm still waiting for those.
I think you can hang that up, Marjorie.
On a big hook.
Yep.
Uh, Mayor is heading to sign in right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
And Mr. Jackson, could you also, um, we are, uh, we have a question. Could we have the mayor's remarks, uh, delivered to the council, please, uh, via email or, uh, or, or I guess both, um, email and a paper copy tomorrow?
Uh, certainly. So, uh, let me talk to the mayor about it. Uh, they will be marked as prepared for delivery in case he goes off script.
Very good. Thank you.
Oh, my God.
Finance Director Jackson, I still have some, your, your remarks, your first budget that I was on council. I've kept, I kept your, um, um, speech.
Throw away, throw away.
Can you get a drum roll or something?
I do utilize sound effects for my students in class, but I'm not sure that's appropriate for.
Throw us a drum roll, man.
Uh, you know, I don't have a drum roll. I have a sad trombone, you know?
Oh, don't worry, you won't need that today.
Uh, I have thunder applause and, um, that stadium song thing, um, that they play at large sports events. Jam. Is that what that is?
Yeah, that's a, that's a problematic one.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
What, what, which one?
Da na 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 na, hey, that one.
No, 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 not that one. Um. Dun, 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 that one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Watch out, you're being recorded.
Yeah, that one.
I think the name of that would.
That would be, that would be getting recorded twice.
I'm not, I'm not sure what it's, but, uh, um, they're high school students, but they still love a sticker, so. You can get a Good Job Apple, a Happy Frog, or, um, a Dump Truck, uh, Plow Truck or Crane. They still love them.
Some of the rest of us still like stickers, too.
That's a great sticker.
It's a well-known, um, reward signal, you know, signal that you've been rewarded for something. You gotta stick.
That's your sticker.
Okay, try the drum roll one more time.
Couldn't hear it. Still wear it? No.
Wow, anyone else hear it?
I heard some like scratching.
More static.
Ah, it worked, Marjorie. Good job, thank you.
Justin is in the audience.
I, I just fished them out. Hello, Councilman Farmer.
Did even Council President McGary as well as other distinguished, uh, administration?
Distinguished, wow. Mr. President. Hello, Mayor Lang. Thank you for joining us.
My apologies, trying to get in there. Thank you for your patience.
Uh, quite all right. All right, so, uh, now that Mayor Lang has joined us, uh, I'll open up this, uh, meeting, a special meeting of the Legislative Council at, uh, six eighteen. Ms. Renta, could you take the role, please?
I was muted. Ms. Baez? Ms. Bonnades?
Here. Mr. Caesar?
Ms. Klaus? Ms. Dolan? Mr. Farmer?
President.
Ms. Horstley?
Here.
Ms. Gary?
Here.
Mr. McDowell?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Present.
Ms. Roy Lewis?
Present.
The Shoemaker?
Present.
Weber?
Here.
Ms. Wetmore?
Here.
Ten present, five absent.
Thank you, Ms. Renta. Uh, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance in our moment of silence. Uh, during our moment of silence, we can keep in mind the family of, uh, Frank Mangiero. He's a person who, uh, perished in the fire, uh, recently, and I know there've been some other victims of gun violence, and I was unable to collect their names, but if we could keep in hearts in mind, uh, the folks who have suffered violence and, uh, the men.
Bar one of these.
Yeah.
Um, and why don't we, uh, Mr. Mr. Lang, as our special guest, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Mayor Lang? Matt, uh, Mayor Lang, uh, why don't we go with Ms. Wetmore then? Betty, could you lead us with the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you. Um, Ms. McDowell, do you have something good to order? I'm not really gonna do questions today. We're just gonna move into the mayor's address.
I just wanted to thank you for, uh, bringing up Mr. Mangiero. There is a GoFundMe going around for anyone who is able to contribute. Um, the family needs help with resting costs and, and, uh, uh, housing. So anyone who can help contribute to that, it would, it would be meaningful in a difficult time.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell.
A good neighbor and, uh, hopefully we can all help him. Thank you.
If you could, could you send that perhaps to Ms. Renta? We could put that, uh, at the Facebook page.
Yeah, I'll put it in the chat.
Thank you. That'd be very, very nice. Uh, just to, like I said, I'm not gonna do, uh, much, just make a couple announcements about our process and then just hand it over to, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Lang for, uh, the, his address. Um, just a couple notes, we will, uh, the, um, budget deliberation schedule is up. We will be having department head testimony in twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Ms. Renta will be inviting our department heads. Uh, for, uh, we don't have a ton of time, but for specific questions ahead of time, if you have any for department heads, if you'd send them, Ms. Renta, she will gather them, send them to the department heads, so they can address them in their, uh, in their, um, delivery to the council. We will have time for questions that evening as well. And of course, then we'll have our independent departments. Also, just one thing of note, the Fiscal Stability Committee will also be examining the assumptions in the budget and giving us some thoughts on that by, before our deliberations begin April 6th. So let's keep that in mind as well. And with that, Mayor Lang, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, good evening, honorable members of the council and all fellow citizens of our town and community who decided to tune in and listen to tonight's presentation. A little over a year ago, her world changed. No one, no one upon no one across the globe was fully prepared for what the COVID pandemic would break, nor what it would leave in its path, or what it would take away. Last April, I stood before you in the uncertainty of an uprooted budget timeline, of an uprooted budget process. For the first time, we were forced to go into a digital environment to protect everyone's health and safety in the midst of our first state surge of this pandemic. It was a frightening and deadly time, filled with uncertainty in so many aspects of life, personal, familial, medical, governmental, and most certainly financial and budgetarily right here in our hometown. It is within this context that I ask you to join me in thanking Hamden's extraordinary public safety officers, police, fire, our first responders in the Public Works Department, our elderly and community services, the best damn team in the state of Connecticut and maybe in the country, our Board of Education leadership, and every amazing educator, and so many more on our Hamden team, paid volunteers, citizen, and neighbor. This is Hamden, and this is why, without missing so much as a day, our residents never had a question if their hometown government had their backs, not even once. This gratitude is sincere. I'm sure that you share it. I think it's important that we say it. I'm also very thankful for our experience and caring and very well-prepared Hamden Emergency Management Team. Together, we're able to steer the ship with steady hands from tornado to hurricane to pandemic, and with dedication and sincere care for our neighborhoods that's always beyond the call of duty. And I think that you know each of the individuals that we're talking about, and I'm so very thankful for each of these men and women and for so many in our community, beyond our medical professionals, of course. I ask that you join me in thanking them today because I don't think they get enough appreciation, enough recognition. And despite all their work over the course of the pandemic, sometimes they're feeling a little beat up because of the amount of work they've had to do, sometimes while still getting challenged on a lot of things. I wanted to start off on that, on that note. It's hard to believe that we're a year later in this. Some days it feels like a few months, some days it feels like a decade. But tonight, we come together again, and after many months of challenges unprecedented in our time, we're still meeting electronically. Now, I think that's different than last time because last time there was such uncertainty. Now, we have a determined cautious hope and an optimism rather than fear and complete uncertainty. If together, we can continue being vigilant with health and safety practices, making sure that we are vaccinated as soon as we're eligible, and coupling that with governmental operations and financial reform efforts, we approach the future with confidence, knowing that we can, that we can have, and we will continue to get through this together. While we still have so much to tackle locally and most certainly systematically throughout our society, we stand so close to the precipice of a new day. I believe this budget represents the start of this new day in our Hamden. A new normal of brace yourselves, stability, sensibility, and steadiness, coupled when needed by bold action, is not only Hamden's goal, it's what's modeled in the budget. That's before you this evening. We, together as stewards of our town's government services, operations, and finances, have sworn responsibility to deliver, to deliver for our residents to the very best of our abilities. Logic and love of neighbor can be our guiding light again. We can do this. So much time has been spent talking about the town's financial woes, real and exaggerated, how Hamden was broke, how our budgets were not truthful or accurate, how the state was coming in, take us over, where we could lose all control of, of our operations, and undoubtedly would push forward an immense tax increase, which the state would impose. Instead, as an administration, as a council, working to budget, trying to govern, this was an incredibly dark thunder cloud over all of us. And at times, it seemed like a strategic drumbeat of bad news that's been rough for all of us in our operations. It's not been positive, has not been helpful. And in truth, it's harmed us. It's harmed our town's image. And I mean that both within our town, our residents, our new residents that are experiencing Hamden for the first time, and certainly those outside of our community who don't really know what Hamden's all about. We have financial challenges. Make no mistake, but our team knows how to address them. Some reforms took many years. They took many years to address. Others needed some quick and nimble action of experienced professionals, but decades-long problems take time to fix. When I came before you during the budget process and soon after last year, my team and I reported that Hamden would likely have a deficit in the last budget, but that we had a plan to not only mitigate the deficit, but to also erase it within 12 months. We have done what we said we would do. Our fund balance restoration plan is underway, in no small part due to your very hard work, your fortitude, supporting the plan, working hard on the last budget, and making tough decisions that were not always popular. I'm confident that we will end the current fiscal year with a budget surplus. This will work to further restore our fund balance as planned. It is working. And then there's the malarkey of a state takeover or being ordered into the MARB. It's important for us to make it clear, dating back to August of 2020, Hamden has voluntarily been participating in the state's MFAK, the Municipal Finance Advisory Commission. And we've had positive meetings, sharing our plans, and listening to some good advice. We're not being taken over by the state. We're not going into the MARB. We have no interest and no need to go into the MARB, and the state is not taking us over. Instead, we work to address our challenges, and we're stepping into a new day where many of those dark clouds have actually begun to move, and we can feel the sun breaking through. Hamden has the fortune of starting this year's budget process with the knowledge that our budget deficits are a thing of the past, that the fund balance is set to have a positive and growing balance, and that there's an additional, and there are additional resources coming to Hamden, federal, state, and local. And I can't remember another time when we said that, all three levels. Due to our town's grand list growth, additional state resources, thanks to the governor's protection of our existing town revenues, because he understands the importance of protecting the towns, and in particular Senator Looney's payment in lieu of taxes legislation, which was approved recently with the support of many cross-party lines and geographic areas, and with the support of our strong Hamden delegation, this knowledge is a result in Hamden having an influx of resources of $2.9 million. That's, that's a big game changer. That's nearly a mill difference. In addition, we are going to have an influx thanks to the American Rescue Act. We may realize significant help as we seek to recover decades of underfunding from ECS and other non-tax revenues that always dwindle year to year. And it gives the town a once-in-a-generation chance to restore, invest, and protect. A very sincere thanks is owed to Congresswoman and Appropriations Chair, and I always love to say that. It sounds nice, feels good. Appropriations Chair Rosa DeLoro. She fought tireless for Hamden and for communities in her district and across this country, understanding the importance of direct, the importance and the direct correlation of protecting police officers and firefighters, educators, and more, knowing that local economies, local towns, have a direct impact on the overall economy of the country. We're very, very fortunate to have a power, a powerhouse like her representing us in DC. All of this can allow us to enter this year's budget process without the level of despair that too many recent budget processes have started in, and understandably so. In those times, there were only agonizing cuts to consider, things that were unpleasant, unfavorable, terrible. Those, those were the items on the menu. Instead, we have an opportunity to have healthy debates about what services benefit Hamdenites the most, and in what ways those programs and services could best benefit. Very different debates, while still continuing to make sure we fund all of our obligations. The clarity of knowing that you're, that we're not trying to rescue a sinking ship, but instead to keep the sail strong and help support the wind to continue in the right direction, I hope will be a relief. I know it is in my head and heart. And I hope it's a relief in a time when we could use a little relief and a little cautious optimism in this world. This budget before you is, is responsible and is responsive. It funds our obligations, going so far as to start to pay additional funds toward areas like our town pension. It contains the most conservative of revenue estimates and a strong funding of our essential services. It provides forward-thinking efforts to address glaring needs in prevention and protection, and it reduces our tax bill rate by just over a half a mil, because our residents need to know that we understand how hard they've been hit by our high taxes, which are far too high, especially when so many have been harshly hit one way or another affected by the pandemic. We have to show, even if it is a small reduction, that we understand the need to reduce. The increases that fixed the town's pension have brought us to a day when that annual tax increase that almost became an expected cynical norm, they're not here anymore. Our ARC payment actually went down this year. In the budget, you'll see a recommendation for us to maintain that funded because we understand the importance moving forward, but we've reached the top of that mountain. As much as last year, this budget is a working document, one that will undoubtedly change and evolve. I've worked to try, along with, along with my team, to make a visionary budget, one that can be really impactful. I would like to especially thank our Finance Director Scott Jackson, Deputy Finance Director Galarza, Chief of Staff Sendroff, and Deputy Chief of Staff Donnelly for their work on these efforts. I think it was a result in language that's going to allow us to do things that we have not been able to even consider doing for some time. And to be clear, there's not a dollar in this budget of American Rescue Act money. There is no COVID revenue in this budget. COVID revenue will come. It is law. When that comes, we'll have some good decisions to make on what investments we can make and what funds we can shore up. In addition, it also contains absolutely no revenue expectations from grants or capital projects, not a dollar. You'll find all the revenue estimates contained within the budget to be conservative, tied to data-driven, confirmable sources or formulas, and mirroring historic averages or programmatic realities. With the knowledge that our finances are improving, our budgeting practices are stronger than ever, and that we can refocus, not just saving the town's future, but on building a stronger, brighter future, a more stable and sensible and steady future for our hometown, that's what this budget is about. We often talk about, we all say that a town's budget, a budget should reflect a town's values. While we can't correct every problem in our world, they're obviously complex, and they're sometimes meteoric in size when you think about it in our troubled society, but we can do so much for our community. This means a budget that reflects in numbers what we say we value with our words. It means delivering and adopting a budget that addresses not only our overarching values, but also the urgent community needs that we have. That time is here. The Budget Before You presents the most comprehensive effort to date to build upon the outstanding efforts and to further support and continue reforming the enhancements to our public safety departments, police, and fire services our residents desperately count on and so very much deserve. Safe neighborhoods, safe streets, crime reduction and violence prevention, medical and fire response that preserves and protects our people, traffic and pedestrian safety, and most importantly, the safety of our children, their safety in the heat of the moment. And what we can do to directly impact their future are the very fundamentals that healthy adults, healthy families, and healthy communities are built upon, and are the desires of which our neighbors are crying out for with voices that are loud and united, and we are working in this budget to try to address those cries. The town's grand list growth, based on the recently completed state-mandated revaluation of all property, which is required every five years by this date, resulted in, was conducted by an independent firm, and it resulted in a 7.46% increase in our town's grand list. The 2020 grand list change increased our grand list total to $4.18 billion as of October 1st. That $300 million increase in value roughly equals an increase of our mil value by about $400,000. It's the most that we've, that we've, that we've seen in at least the last two revals, if not three, and it's a good sign for our town. For perspective, residential property values experienced an average of approximately 5% growth throughout Hamden, condo units realizing a somewhat lower but still marked growth of about 3%. Important to note, commercial and business properties, including multifamily properties, which contain four or more units, saw the greatest growth, a 20% rise in total assessed value. So as previous revales have shifted more of the burden onto residential homeowners, this revale shifts some of that burden back to the commercial base. That shift toward commercial value means lower share of taxation for homeowners, and that's desperately needed. The truth is, despite voices to the contrary, the sky is not falling in our town. In fact, we're actually getting to a point where we can look up and see blue. In terms of meeting our obligations, I'm very pleased to, to report that this budget funds our obligations in full. It delivers the second year of 100% plus funding of our pension fund, and our pension fund is at the highest level that it's been in 15 years. I'm also very proud and relieved to report to you that we don't have to make the multimillion-dollar automatic tax raising increases to our pension fund this year. Again, we've hit that mountain, mountaintop, excuse me. Hitting a mountain probably would not be quite as, as, as positive. Understanding the importance of the long-term benefit of this funding level and the additional funding that we're trying to provide in this budget is something that now we understand in our lexicon and lingo. An extra $200,000 instead of a reduction will mean hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars that are saved in the future. We are now starting to not only not kick the cow, kick the can down the road, but grab the can and maybe throw it backwards a little bit. As many are aware, Hamden Medical Insurance is the second-largest expense in the entire budget, only behind our investment in our education of our children. The implementation of positive reform efforts, including negotiated changes on both the town and Board of Education union contracts, has delivered two consecutive years now of cost savings in our medical insurance and to the tune of millions of dollars. Some of the millions we'll see in this year's budget that will still need to be included because they're attributed to what some, some are, some are summing up as a reticence of consumers to actually go to the doctor for certain items. But there's a mixed bag with that because a missed physical is not going to happen twice. That sinus infection is not going to be treated a year later. Nonetheless, there are going to be, by every expert standard, increased expenses from what we're seeing this year, based on some COVID reticence. And that's why the medical fund is funded at a significantly higher level than it was last year, even though we saw a significant multimillion dollar savings in our budget this year. The reason that we can do this and not have it push our taxes up again cynically, unavoidably every year is because over time and with a driven commitment, we have worked to reform these health, these health, health plans. Their negotiation, their buy-in, their contribution. And we've added additional cost savings reform measures right now that are currently underway. That will continue to expand upon these efforts to the millions of dollars if we can be successful. And which we've been working on for three full years and which I'm looking forward to forwarding to the council for your consideration within your budget timeframe. These plans worked on over these years would provide the exceptional, not only the equivalent, but actually better employee healthcare benefits to our retirees, which have been earned, keeping our commitment. But also in a way that reduces Hammond's costs for the benefit to our taxpayers. The actions will protect our commitments. They'll protect our taxpayers and they're the right thing to do. With these items in mind and knowing that our obligation to the shared community values which unite us all. This budget builds upon the community policing efforts. And the expanded social services for a better society model that we worked very hard to implement here in Hampton and we certainly all care about and buy into. In these efforts, we've experienced success with the neighborhood initiative unit. And collaboration with community nonprofits, with face, faith-based initiatives, faith-based organizations and other partners, more than ever before, really than I can certainly think of. And all of whom are so very committed and dedicated to doing everything that they can along with us to build a stronger, safer, more sustainable Hammond for our families in our future. Throwing out one example, it takes a village, a resident, building a community center, a youth center on their own, because they knew it was important to our youth. That doesn't happen everywhere. Newly appointed police chief John Sullivan has been leading our department alongside these partners and implementing a strong approach to community policing that Hampton has ever seen, the strongest community policing approach that we've ever seen. Hammond will continue to work alongside our neighborhood leaders as we've done through our community crime prevention forums, neighborhood block watches, the beginning of our equity and inclusivity task force, numerous youth organization and youth oriented programs like National Night Out and others. I'm very pleased to announce that in this budget, there's a funding recommendation for the police athletic league. The fact is that community policing and our engagement with community policing and the effect of that engagement, having officers that are directly interacting with our residents and our youth is not only working, but it's having an effective result for Hampton right now. And the more that we do and the more that we invest in it, the more that we can expect to get from it. To engage with our community, we need not only more officers interacting with our residents, but the right officers to do so. That's what's community policing is truly about. It's ensuring that our officers represent our community and are equipped to serve it with the resources, training and manpower that Hammond demands. To that end, I'm recommending that this budget have five new police positions. Understanding our community needs is critically important. And so I've recommended, along with the police chief, the development of our first crisis intervention team that these officers would help create. This team will consist of trained Hammond officers equipped with additional resources designed to more appropriately respond to specific, to specific emergency needs at hand. They can be intervention, they could be mental health, they can be trauma. This is a service that's not provided everywhere and is a step beyond the traditional community policing model. When it comes to mental health, emotional trauma calls and other scenarios, ensuring the correct resources are engaged is critically important. And would be actually putting our money where our mouth is when we say that we want wraparound services and true community policing. Our community is growing and adapting and the needs of our residents are also changing. It's fast moving. It's constant. We're in an evolving world now more than ever. And I think that we can be ahead of the curve. Our residents are expecting it. This budget includes an increase in the Hammond Public Schools budget as a demonstration of our strong partnership and understanding, not only of the education system's importance to every aspect of our society, but also to their commitment beyond education to food security and to lending a hand throughout this pandemic. In straight operating dollars, it's a 1.4% increase. But what it does is that it fully ensures that the teacher's recent contract approval and the increase that is a hard contract increase is fully funded. And that is only a small portion of the story, because if you take into account the increase in state alliance district money, other grant funds that are coming directly to the board and the already approved funding from the American Rescue Plan, which is of course not budgeted again, totaling $10 million over the next two years. I think that this type and this level of increase demonstrates our commitment to education, but also allows us to not overtax our residents and rely a little bit more on the grant funding that's available. Borrowing and capital plans have been discussed a lot. And we have been pausing many of them. We formally pursued a relatively progressive approach to capital bonding. And this was notably seen with expansive infrastructure improvements in the mid 2010s. However, as the decade closed, Hampton adopted an approach of utilizing already incurred debt to offset existing operational and capital expenses. We created a debt diet. We stopped borrowing because that was part of our plan. It was not perfect. It did create backlogs and problems. But we were only bonding for the most essential of projects and mainly those which brought other grant funds with it or that were school related. It resulted in a reduction of expenses associated with incurring new bond debt. But it also occurred at a pivotal moment where infrastructure needs now are at a high. So we need to make sure that we're going to fund a capital budget this year that is robust, that's thoughtful and that maximizes the return on investment. That said, I need to recognize town engineer Mark Austin, who has very successfully worked and modeled Hammond's capital philosophy. Big. Do the needed investments, leverage large federal and state grants, show that the grants are out there. And do your best to require limited town cash contributions. While these capital projects have been paused to realize the hard dollar annual savings of holding down on, in a debt diet. The time has come to properly fund these essentials and we'll be sending that down to you soon. After paving 50 miles roadway, which was deserved and appreciated certainly by our residents, we halted that program. It's started to take effect. We're feeling it. We can't catch up with the potholes. That's not where we want to be. Let's get back into a good program of infrastructure investment in our roads and in our buildings. I think it's something that we can all agree upon and it's something that we can do when the borrowing costs are at an all-time low. In addition to the capital request, which the council ultimately received, the, the request will follow some consistent themes. Building maintenance, maximizing grant funds and ensuring, and ensuring public safety vehicles, because we are at a critical point with our public safety vehicles, both on the police and fire side that need our immediate attention. Evolution of government requires innovation. And it requires a lot of willpower. It requires a lot of patience. Thankfully, Hammond's well-suited succeed, I think, with a complement of innovative and specialized professionals and dedicated staff. Ready to evolve, ready to bring him then to a point where we're in a post-pandemic boom. We're developing creative solutions and putting new ideas and concepts on the table, both in this budget and out. And we're trying to return some services that were lost that our residents are counting on and are hoping are going to be included again as we move forward. Two examples of that are library Sunday hours that our families really would have loved to been experiencing, but couldn't during the COVID period. And a return of some level of bulk trash pickup at curbside at your house. That demand for that bulk trash pickup is extraordinary. I think we've all heard it loud and clear from our residents. And we plan on working to negotiate the best program that we can and the most cost-effective one, either with our current vendor or through a procurement process. Our residents, they deserve to be able to clean out their homes before winter and to do so easily and without hassle and not to to allow a resident that might have a truck or might have more free time during a weekday, be able to use that service at the transfer station, whereas others can't on a Saturday or Sunday when often we are not open. As I reflect upon the compilation of this year's budget and budgets that I've delivered to you guys over the past, the consistent theme of shared community values comes back and they come back time and time again. I'm remembering this year, especially now in this budget cycle, two Titans who served on the legislative body, who I've worked with, who I've served with and who we lost. Mike Kolokova and Harry Galeardi. Hampton was unfortunate enough to lose both of these men in 2020. It's hard to even think that happened. I can still hear both of them, both at the council table and, and outside, and in both positive and in negative statements to me. Both accepted and deserved as good men. But we were very, very fortunate to have experienced their service and their dedication to our community for many, many years. Mike and Harry showed the power of collaboration and leadership in Hammond. And the benefit it brings to our residents and our town as a whole. I see glimpses of their legacy coming to life here today with collaborations being fostered by council members. For example, Councilman Justin Farmer and his efforts to breathe life back into the Hammond Powder Farm. A noble and potentially transformative endeavor that will bring public open space to Southern Hampton and one in which I couldn't support more completely. I'd also like to thank the fiscal stability committee and its chair, councilperson Horsley. This committee has worked hard to issue financial recommendations for our town. And I am pleased that we have followed many of your suggestions within this budget and you will see them throughout and throughout recommended administrative actions that couple aside them. We're here for our neighbors. I hand this budget to you, but I also would like to very sincerely offer my teams full throughout the process, which will undoubtedly deliver a stronger budget and a stronger Hammond if we do it together. Let's be honest with each other, with each other. That didn't happen as well last year. We can do it better. We're at a point where we can do it better. And we can do this. We can do this to help our neighbors. That's why we're here. That's why I'm delivering this budget to you and why you're painstakingly going to deliberate upon it for many, many hours. Hopefully a few less hours than last year, which almost made a few of you quit. But nonetheless, they'll be painstaking hours. The process isn't pretty. It's not easy. But it is necessary and it's our jobs. I ask that we unite for our shared values and let's work to take these actions together. We've proved that we can do it. The numbers actually prove it out. And now we need to prove that we have the fortitude to keep things strong for the days, the years and the generations to come. This is our stamp on Hammond's future. Our stamp. Each of us. Thank you for taking some time to listen to me tonight. Thank you for taking the time to look at the documents and the digital data that will be shared with you. I believe that you'll take this budget and believe that it is a stronger, a more conservative and a more fiscally stable document that you've received probably in many years. And I look forward to working with you on it. Thank you very, very much. May God bless you. Stay safe and look forward to working with you. Have a great night, everybody.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Lang. Appreciate it. We do have a lot of work ahead of us. And just to confirm, Mr. Jackson, so we're going to receive an electronic version relatively soon and paper copies delivered tomorrow.
Yes, as soon as we can get them out of the printer, we will start the distribution process.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Department heads, meetings next week and public hearings, the 30th and the 31st, so.
Council president, can we make sure that the graphs and figures on that are formatted for the binder so that we're not crisscrossing back and forth?
If you, if that can be done, Mr. Jackson, that would be helpful. A lot of flipping was flipped us out a little bit, so that would be.
Understood.
No one likes a flip-flopper. I think we can work on that.
All right. So thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Lang and your staff for being here, Mr. Sendruff, Mr. Jackson. They have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded, looks like Ms. Bonney's got in there. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying or showing eye. Abstentions. We are adjourned at 6:59. Have a good, everyone. Happy St. Patrick's Day.